We will call the order of the July the 23rd, 2020 Coffee County Board of Education Work Session. Dr. Lys, you want to give our indication, please?
Thank you, sir. Good value here. Our father would thank me for that many blessings, keep us from harm, teach us to be true to each other, ourselves indeed, or guide and direct us as we do the work of the Coffee County School System here tonight to benefit our boys and girls and our students here in Coffee County and our entire community. And we're just thankful to be able to be here and do this business and be with those who are sick and suffering through this challenging time of COVID-19 and all the other issues and challenges that we have as a country and as a community. But we're just guiding directors and Jesus in our prayer. Amen.
All right, everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. You have a motion to adopt. The agenda is presented.
Hello.
Second. Motion second. I'm in favor.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Dr. Lys.
All right. And you've got the agenda. You have the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any concerns or questions about the minutes to publish? Do you want to take a minute to look over those? All right, the next item, if it pleases the board, we'll place the minutes on the consent agenda at the regular monthly meeting. We have the financial report. And we have the tentative monthly financial report. Ms. Yawn, do you want to describe this report that we're looking at?
Yes, sir. This is the tentative FY '20 financials as of June 30. We're currently going through our closing process where we're posting our closing entries and performing our closing procedures. This is tentative. We do not have the official accrual allotment sheet for July and August salaries from the state, so that this is very tentative. But going through this, we should have, they should post that soon. They're working on that. In reviewing this, you know, we saved some operational expenditures during the shutdown in our maintenance department, our safety department, and transportation, and throughout most all of our departments, we were able to save some. So that reflects, you know, that we should have approximately $18,516,657.35. But again, that is a tentative figure. We plan to close the books in September, and once we close those, we'll report to you the final fund equity at that time.
The next document that we have is the proposed revenue adopted by the board. And the original revenue projections that we had from the State Department have changed slightly. So you want to describe these changes in these documents?
Yeah, the first document that you see here is the proposed revenue that was included in the tentative budget that was adopted at the last board meeting. And the revenue, total revenue on that report was $65,591,889. But July 10, the state released the official allotment sheets. So I have updated this report in the second document to reflect those allotments. This is the first allotment sheet. This is the initial one that we reviewed. If you come on down, you can see the total that was proposed for FY '21. And then there's a second document.
Number three.
This document on the second page reflects the updated amounts from the Department of Education per our allotment sheet. So the total amount of our revenue is $65,580,48. That is a decrease of $11,841 than what we had proposed.
We just wanted to present that to the board and make sure you were aware of that $11,000 difference in what we were projecting we would receive and what we're receiving. So not a big change, but we want to make sure the board is aware of. And the last document is the East Bloss report. And we have our June revenue from East Bloss. And as you'll see, the number for June was really strong. People were spending money locally. That's the most we've ever received in East Bloss.
Larger than June.
Yeah.
I know it's June.
Yeah. So I think there's a lot of factors to consider. People are staying home or staying local to buy and to shop, which is a good thing. So, all right. If there's no questions or concerns about the financials, we will include those in the regular meeting for approval.
Yeah, I do have a question. Do you have a TADT report for last month?
We're still posting entries today, our closing entries. We'll have some more accounts receivables to post, but in reviewing it, it looks like, you know, those have come in rather strong. They're, you know, going to be over with what we have mentioned.
Yeah, a lot of cars have been sold locally. Now, you were going to stop me. We don't need to get board approval on this tentative report. That's what, all right. So this is a tentative report, so we won't be placing the tentative on the agenda for formal approval.
I can't hear you. I'll take it in.
All right. I said, we won't be, we won't place the tentative revenue or the tentative financial report on the agenda at the regular meeting because it's a tentative report. When we get the official documents in in September, then we will ask the board to approve those. All right, the next item on the agenda is the tax digest. And I got to take this thing off. Tax digest and mileage rate. We just received this from the county yesterday. They got it prepared for us, and this is a, once again, a tentative tax digest. We did want to present it to the board, but they were certain to tell us that this could change slightly. They're pretty confident that it'll stay close to where it's at, but there could be some slight changes in the, in the tax digest. You'll see, it looks like what they are presenting right now is that the mileage will stay the We will be advertising this in the paper.
He should have the official tax digest first week in August, so we'll, we'll get those numbers to the board and update the sheet. And once he does that, once we get the official document in and we update, we'll let you be aware of it. Then we're going to post it in the newspaper and on our website as well. And then we'd like to bring it back to you at the next board meeting for approval. That would be the plan.
All right, are there any questions about this tentative tax digest? The next item on the agenda is bids. We have school nutrition bids, and Ms. Dawn Lewis, our nutrition director, is here to answer any questions about those bids. Ms. Lewis, do you have any information that you want to express about the bids?
They were the bids presented last month, so if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, there really, there's not been any changes in what we proposed last month to the board.
Great. All right, if it pleases, the board will place those on the consent agenda at the meeting following this one.
Mr. Chair, I'll need to recuse myself on that vote, so it might need to be a separate item.
Well, yeah, it is a separate item.
Yeah, I do business with Williams and several months.
All right. We'll vote the nutrition bids separate when we get into the regular meeting at 7:30 noon.
And I'll just abstain.
All right. ATC Fiber Optic Cabling. As you'll recall, board members at our February retreat, the Technology Department presented a plan to move our fiber optic cables that come into this office over to the George Washington Car or Freshman Campus where our Technology Department is housed. We have our main servers for the school district in this building, and the fiber optic comes into this building. The plan will be to move the fiber optic over to the Technology Department and place the system servers over in the Technology Department. ATC Alma Telephone Company, who we get the fiber optic and the internet service through, will move the cabling at a cost of $62,240.32. And this was something that we were planning to do, and we had presented to the board at our February retreat as something we wanted to do. If this property were to ever sell, y'all know we have Chick-fil-A coming up next door. That's going to be wonderful. We'll all be able to enjoy Chick-fil-A. And so we've got Chick-fil-A coming in next door, and then, of course, the other development is going to go on. And the fiber was accidentally cut last month, or earlier this month, by the contractors. And ATC is worried that if we don't go ahead and move the cable, it could be cut again. We were planning to do it anyway, so let's go ahead and just move it now. And so we'll use East Bloss funding to pay to move the cabling and then the servers and cable will all be done.
Dr. Lys, if I might add, if you recall at the retreat, the original quote on this was about $110,000. That's what we were looking at, coming from the central office over behind Windstream, coming down under the tracks, CSX right away, and down Gasket. So this lower price involves slicing directly out here in front of this building, and just about, you know, probably less than half the route, it would be the other direction. So going straight down behind street to the freshman campus.
How long will it take them and what kind of interruptions?
They've already started surveying the area. Upon approval tonight, they're planning to come in as soon as next week and go ahead and put the conduit into the building at this end and at our end. And then basically, the room that I'm using as an office right now will become the server room, so I have to get with our maintenance department, relocate me to another part of our building, and add some power and cooling into that room to turn it into a data center. So probably 60 days timeframe.
What kind of interruption will they go on?
There will be no interruption. We will, we'll have dual service, go run the fiber from here to there while keeping this one intact. And we'll schedule a cut over day, probably on a Friday afternoon or holiday weekend depending on when the actual date comes up. And we'll shut the network down one afternoon, work through that evening, and probably a Saturday or a holiday if need be, and the next visit day we should be able to run.
Okay. All right. If it pleases, the board will place this on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. The next item on the agenda is the Georgia School Board Association Governance Team of the Year. We've got an application that's been almost totally completed. We had a group working on this. Allison Spade and Christina Tucker and Logan Evans have been working on this Governance Team of the Year application. As we look through it, we can check most of the boxes in the application, so we thought we should go ahead and submit an application and see if we can get Coffee County recognize this Governance Team of the Year. We also have the president-elect for the Georgia School Board Association on our board, so we thought that was something we should pursue. So the board does have to approve us applying for the GSPA Governance Team of the Year. And we would do that at the meeting following this one. Land Bank Authority Reappointment. As you know, the City County School Board formed the Land Bank Authority last year. Mr. Adam Locke, our board chair, was a member from the Board of Education, so we are asking that Adam Locke be approved to serve on the Land Bank Authority recognition, serving as the Board of Education member. All right. All right, we'll have to vote out them separately too, Robyn, so if you will, when we get to that, we'll pull that off. School start date. We have been working with a group of about 45 staff members from the schools. We had a large meeting, a couple of meetings over the last two weeks with principals, assistant principals, some of the leadership from the schools. We met at the middle school auditorium, and we are planning to return to school. And as we were working on that, it became apparent that our teachers are going to need more time to plan and to prepare for our students to return, and safety will be the number one priority. And in order to plan for the safety involved in COVID, in order to plan for the academics that will have to be modified because of COVID and the other things that will have to go on to start the schools back up, you know, we've been out since March. The teachers have been working hard doing the virtual distance during the March, April, May, but so to get the schools started back up, we felt like we needed some additional time, and the principals felt like we needed some additional time, and I've heard from some teachers that they felt like they needed some additional time to be prepared. So we're asking the board to move or to approve movement of the start date back to August 17th rather than August 7th. And this would give additional days for planning and preparation for return to school. Also, another issue that we have is the high school renovations that are going on. This will give us time to make sure that we have those renovations complete and get the school cleaned up ready for students to return. And another piece to all this, too, is the virtual learning. We've got a plan to virtual learning. Yesterday, we had around 1,500, or this morning, that have signed up for virtual learning. So there's going to have to be a lot of work that goes into planning the virtual learning program and making sure that everybody's on the same page with virtual learning when we start that up. So that's what this additional time will be used for. Are there any questions?
I'll stay a lot, I mean, you know, I was ready to get back to school. I understand they need more time. I understand our high school, we've got to have some more time to get everything taken care of out there. I still like the idea, like I say, of elementary school starting on Friday. I just like that one day, especially at age, going there and just kind of see, you know, what they've got going on. It's a Friday, you go back, you got the weekend to come. High school, not so much. They, you know, listen, they know what they're doing.
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, you know, like I say, that's the recommendation of administration leadership. I just kind of like the idea of getting them all out there on full team, don't have it Friday.
Yes.
Especially the young ones. I just think that's a big idea.
We, Mr. Chairman, we did discuss that, and I talked about it with various staff up here, and there was consensus that if we start them on different days, there may be some confusion with parents, parents that go to work and such, and so everybody just got to be starting on the same day.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm not, you know, look, it's, it's one day. I'm not, I just, I just like that, you know, for those younger kids having that one day to kind of get assembled and then.
Yes, sir.
Well, I really think we do need to listen to the teachers because they are the ones that are teaching. You know, we home, working at our jobs or whatever, so we don't really know much about what's going on and what it's going to take to prepare for the students to come back. So if these teachers are thinking they need more time, and you got to give them what they need in order for them to be teaching safely, because it is a safety hazard for those kids to go back any kind of way.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying. I like the idea of Friday, but that's what they recommended, that's what they want to do, and I find that, you know.
Dr. Lys, we're not changing anything else on the calendar there.
No, ma'am. The teachers will report back to work on the same days that we had on the original calendar. This will give plenty of time for planning and preparation in the virtual school setup, but schools start on August 17th rather than Friday.
It gives us time to get into our school, maybe everything like the state.
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, that's like there's something different.
Yes, sir. All right. I think our people will be ready. I think they're ready to get back. So if it's okay with the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda, the regular monthly The next item on the agenda is the Back to School Plan for 2020 and '21, and we have Ms. Kim Miller, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to describe to us this plan. This has been a team effort, as I said earlier. There's been a large group working on this since May. We had our first meetings back in May to plan the return to school, and so this is the culmination of all of that work. So, Ms. Miller, you want to describe our return to school plan?
I will. Thank you, Dr. Lys. This plan, all of our guidance that we've been using has come from the CDC, the Department of Health, and the Georgia Department of Education. And as you all know, as we've all been living through this pandemic, it changes as we live through it. So we've had to make adjustments as we planned. We've had many meetings as a team, not just single people, but as a whole group, working on what to do to best meet the needs of our students and Coffee County School System. So we are planning to have a traditional start on August 17th, 2020. This will enable us to really work with our teachers, train, and prepare for our boys and girls when they come back to us on August 17. We have, I can't figure this, scroll through that. We have two options, as you all know. We have a traditional option, and we have a virtual option. We had an application process that ended last night at 11:59, and as of then, we had about, it was a little over 1,500, but there were some duplicates on the list, and when we cleaned it up, it's around 1,400. We had some people, I guess they were afraid that they didn't get through it right, so they did it again. So we went through and cleaned that up, and we do have around 1,400 students. For the traditional, for both models, we will be using Coffee County School System teachers. We will be using programs that we have in our school system. We use Google Classroom in the classrooms anyway, but teachers who are doing virtual will use Google Meet, Google Classroom, as well as some, as some other platforms that we have available to us. Virtual is for K-12, pre-K, it's not, it's not, it's not eligible for virtual. For virtual, we are asking that elementary students who sign up for virtual stay in the virtual program for nine weeks, at least nine weeks. They can, they can stay longer. And for our secondary students, middle and high school, we ask that they stay for a full semester. I'm just going to hit the highlights.
Yeah.
So we've talked a lot about cleaning and hygiene, and you all know that it has been preached to all of us since the onset of COVID-19 that we should wash our hands, we should social distance as much as possible, and we should wear masks. Hand sanitizer is very important. Ms. Yawn and Mr. Spikes, Dr. Banks, and the whole team have talked a lot about cleanliness and hygiene and what we can have in place to ensure that we have the most safe, cleanest environment we can for our students when they return. So hand sanitizer has been purchased for every classroom. There will be hand sanitizer at the front office. Temperature checks for visitors will be required. We ask that visitors wear masks. We're going to do training for students to not just splash water on their hands and go, but wash their hands thoroughly, so just really work with them. You know, we are, we are educators, we are teachers, so we're going to try to teach those children to be as safe as they can while they're in our building and outside of our building. There will be disinfectant in the schools, in the classroom, for teachers to be able to use. Of course, that will be kept out of the way of students so they can't get hold of it, but it's safe, and it has been approved for us to use in our schools, and they'll be able to use that in their classroom to wipe desks and wipe door handles and whatnot during the day. It's going to take a team. Our custodians will be working to keep schools clean, but they're not in the classroom all the time, so as a team, we will all work together to keep our schools clean. As far as our clinics, excuse me, and student health, our nurses, of course, will be on staff as always. We will have PPE here for our nurses whenever there is a situation of a student who may have to see the nurse for symptoms related to COVID-19. Those students will go to an isolated area, not the normal clinic area. That will be for well visits, not COVID-19 visits. Any student or staff member who gets ill during the day will have to be, will go home immediately. Of course, parents would have to come get their child, but the staff would be excused from school, and we would take our steps in our protocol to contact parents and that kind of thing. We do have touchless thermometers for our schools to be able to take temperatures of students, staff members, and visitors. As far as communication goes, we will continue to push things out through our social media networks, Douglas Now, the Douglas Enterprise, and then we have the software KenVoo or KenBob that texts parents' messages. Those of you who are parents in the room tonight know what KenBob is, because I'm sure you get plenty of messages from us during the school year. There's signs that the schools have got to post around their buildings to remind people to social distance, to wear masks, to wash their hands, et cetera, et cetera. You know, when there is any type of positive test, we will notify the appropriate people and take precaution and do what we need to do as far as cleaning and, and getting things done the way it needs to be done based on the guidelines. As far as coping and wellness, we all know that COVID-19 has had an effect on all of us. There is a great bit of fear in our community, in the state of Georgia, and the nation from COVID-19. So we have our counselors, our teachers, wellness teams, and social workers. We also have student support case managers that work to identify areas of need, children who have needs that we need to address. So those will continue to do that and provide that support and work with outside agencies and our community partners to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students who need that, that support. Extracurricular activities and athletics. Students who enroll in the virtual program are not allowed to participate in extracurricular and athletics. We will are not allowed to participate in extracurricular and athletics. Um, we will follow G H S A guidelines, you all know that they pushed football season back two weeks. Um, football players will report to their athletic trainer as he takes care of them anyway, lots of times, and those at the middle school or the high school will report to their, whoever's in charge of their, um, athletics on that campus, to let them know that they tested positive, or they've been around somebody, so that they can take precautions for the team to keep the teams as safe as possible during the school year. Um, face coverings and masks, um, we're strongly encouraging that of all students and staff in our buildings, but for students who ride the bus, it's gonna be required. We can't social distance on a bus, so we're asking that all students who ride a bus to wear a, a face covering or a mask. Um, as far as media center procedures, it's the guidance of the, um, CDC and the Department of Health, help to reduce travel and sharing of spaces as much as possible in the schools. So, we're gonna have students not go to the library for, for a while, but they will have carts of books that are taken to their classroom, or baskets of books, and, um, they'll be able to read those books, just like they would if they want to check them out. We'll work really hard to make sure that we have a variety of like self, like style level books for those students, so that we're meeting the needs of all the students in the classrooms. Um, for high school and, and middle school students, if they need to go to the library, they can, for classes or research or whatnot, they can schedule in smaller groups, not just come when you want to, but have a schedule to go in there, so that we can keep the numbers reduced, um, in the media center. It is recommended that American Association, uh, for school libraries, that before checking, once books go out and they come back in, that we hold those books for seventy-two hours before they go back into circulation. Um, monitoring for symptoms for COVID-19, we have been monitoring, self-monitoring our employees for quite a while. We have a questionnaire that we invite everyone in, we have a thermometer that we take our temperatures with, we will continue to do that for our staff. Um, we have a protocol that if your temperature is a hundred, a hundred point four or higher, you don't come to work, um, because that's a, that's one of the symptoms for COVID-19. Um, anyone who has that or has, um, tested positive for COVID-19 or been exposed or been in close contact with anybody of COVID-19, we have safety precautions and a protocol for that, and I'll get to that later. Um, the guidance changed yesterday, up until yesterday, the guidance was students or, or teachers, anybody, needed to be fever-free without fever-reducing medicine for seventy-two hours, but yesterday it changed to twenty-four hours. So, um, that's quite a difference from seventy-two, but that was the change yesterday, so that's what's in our plan right now. Should that change, and if it could, we will adjust our plan. Open house, we, here's our schedule. We are gonna do elementary one week and middle school the next week. This will help, um, parents who have children in both places have an opportunity to go and not be rushed. Um, the middle school, you know, is our largest school in our district, and they will have a virtual option as well, for those parents who don't feel comfortable. Virtual students will have a virtual open house, but those who are going to traditional will also have an opportunity to, to participate in a virtual open house if they don't feel safe to, safe to go on campus and, um, have a, have a traditional open house. We are asking that visitors to open house are limited to two per household, um, in addition to the student, and we ask that they observe social distancing, and we're encouraging them to wear a mask. You can scroll along, Jan. I have been asked about Coffee County's open house, that's to be determined, and that will be announced. Um, right now, that has not been finalized, but when that is finalized, we will push that information out.
And it has some, some, what is due to the fact that they have renovations going on, so we want to get the school as ready as we can before we have an open house.
Um, so, as far as for procedures for safe and healthy schools, we are asking that parents help us, it takes a village, um, and we are asking that parents help us prescreen their children, and if your child is sick, has a fever of a hundred point four or higher, has any of the symptoms for COVID-19, that you keep them at home. And I'll talk about attendance in a, in a minute, because I know that's been an issue, a concern of some parents. We will, um, as I said, temperatures daily of, of employees and children, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. I'm gonna say again, we strongly encourage everyone to wear a mask, not required, but we encourage it. Um, we're gonna be limiting visitors, and if a visitor comes, um, we hope it's an emergency. Um, we won't have a visitor program for a while, we'll just have visitors when it's an emergency or there's a need, and we will screen for a temperature. Um, and we ask that you wear, as visitors, wear a mask. Pre-K kindergarten students who are coming to traditional, we're gonna allow those parents to walk their children to class for the first two days, they, we ask that they wear a mask, and they will have their temperature checked, just like the students before they can enter our building.
And I would like to add, Ms. Miller, we do have seven thousand cloth masks for students that will be distributed, so we will be providing, uh, students with one cloth mask, uh, when we start up school. And then we do have around ten thousand of the surgical masks that, uh, we do have to use in the cases where, that somebody doesn't have a mask, or, you know, there's just a need, that we do, we've got plenty of masks, I just want to make that point. And hand sanitizer, I think we have, how many gallons of hand sanitizer do we have?
Two hundred and forty, fifty gallons.
We've got around two hundred and fifty gallons of hand sanitizer, uh, and, uh, so we've got plenty of hand sanitizer. Uh, we also are getting a shipment of hand sanitizer next week that G-Mas is providing, so we'll, we'll have to send a large truck over to Waycross to the, uh, Risa office next week, and they, they're gonna have, uh, hand sanitizer, I want to say maybe two hundred and fifty ga, uh, two, I think two hundred and fifty gallons of hand sanitizer we're getting from there. Uh, and, uh, so lots of hand sanitizer we'll have, and masks we'll have, so just wanted to make that point.
And the cloth masks that, that we have, the seven thousand, those can be laundry, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And used again, so, um, that'll be good.
I'm, I have a question about that, that, uh, patient that's sanitizing. Um, did you say it was gonna be in designated areas?
We're actually, we're gonna get, we're gonna provide each classroom with a, a gallon bottle of hand sanitizer for students to use. So, each classroom will have a large bottle of hand sanitizer to be used in the classroom, and then each bus will have a large bottle of hand sanitizer, a gallon bottle of hand sanitizer, and we're getting sixteen, uh, hand sanitizing stations for each school that we'll pick up, uh, that's being provided through G-Mas, those little stations that stand on a post, and you walk through and put your hand under, so we've got sixteen of those coming for each school that we'll pick up this next week, so there'll be a lot of hand sanitizer. We've got two different companies that will be getting, uh, sanitizing or disinfected from, our normal custodial company, Back, has purchased, and they're gonna be providing additional, uh, disinfectants for the buildings, and we've also partnered with a, a company called Supersource, and Supersource has a disinfectant product that you, you mix, uh, you dilute it with water, and it's approved by the, uh, EPA to kill COVID. Each teacher will have a bottle of that disinfectant in their classroom to use whenever they want to use it, however much they want to use it, and, and so they will have their own bottle of disinfectant in classroom too, so we'll have two sources of disinfectant that we'll be using. And then also, we've, we've got backpacked, uh, disinfectant sprayers coming each school, we'll have a backpack sprayer, and the transportation department will have backpack sprayers that they'll sanitize the buses with after every run, so lots of sanitizer, lots of disinfectant.
So, we all love to see our kids get awards and have assemblies at school, but those are gonna be, um, on hold until further notice, until we get through this pandemic. Um, as for car riders, when car riders come to school, we're asking that they stay in their car until their temperature has been checked. Once their temperature has been checked, if it's not, um, a hundred point four or higher, they can exit the car and go inside the building. If there's multiple students in a car, we'll check all temperatures prior to them getting out the car. Um, for students that ride the bus, we're asking them to, um, wear a mask when they get to school. Each one of those students, when they get off the bus, their temperature will be checked before entering the building. If they have a temperature of a hundred point four or higher, they will be taken to the isolation room and checked, and parents will be called and that kind of thing. So, we're hoping that between all of us working together with parents, prescreening their children at home, us checking temperatures, that we can keep that to a minimum for those kids coming to school today.
And I know we have a number of parents here in attendance tonight, I know we have a lot of parents viewing, it's gonna be really important when we start back to school, that parents please check your child's temperature daily if possible before they come to school, and if they have a temperature, please don't send them, that's gonna be critical, uh, that we don't send them to school if they have a temperature, if they have symptoms that could be COVID. So, that, it's gonna take everybody working together. I think you said in the beginning, it takes a village, it's really gonna be all of us coming together and working together to make sure we don't, don't have sick children in the buildings, and so.
And as I said earlier, all visitors will have their temperature checked, and we ask that they wear a mask. Um, you can scroll along, Jan. This is our school calendar, um, the only change on this calendar from the last calendar you all saw was we have, we, um, changed the tenth through the fourteenth, spring as professional learning days as opposed to, to student days. Um, school nutrition and serving meals, the nutrition, um, director is here, of course, and she's done, she and her staff, along with Mr. Gilliard, and his staff did a phenomenal job in the spring with serving meals, and, um, they've worked very hard during this pandemic, and continue to work hard and make plans for what's best for our students. We, their, her employees have temperature checks and health screenings every day, they're gonna wear masks, some of them will wear the, the plastic shields, the clear shields, um, they are, have really put their ante with food service, um, since, um, sanitation and safety. There will be a few changes for students, students are using, used to self-serving, there won't be any, any self-serving this year, and there won't be any salad bars in our cafeterias. Um, one thing that you all know, that we have free meals, breakfast and lunch for our students in Coffee County School System, which is a great, great thing, and, um, we're proud to, to be able to do that, but some kids like extra stuff, and so those extra things cost money, so instead of sending money to school, they're encouraging parents to create an, an account on my school bu, bucks, and load money into that account, and so then they will have to, nobody will have to worry about any money. But of course, if, they will take money for their, their accounts, if, or they can pay as they get it, I guess, right, Ms. Lewis? For student attendance, you all know, we have to take student attendance, that's a requirement, um, and we will continue to take student attendance, whether students attend school virtually, or they, they attend school traditionally. The way we will take virtual attendance will be those students who are participating, and we expect them to, you want me to stop? Do you get her?
Yeah. We lost Ms. Wilkerson. Hey, Ms. Wilkerson, welcome back, I don't know what happened there. Thank you for letting me know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wilkerson, I was just talking about the school nutrition and, and that kind of thing. Um, if you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to share that with you, um, later. Um, school attendance is important to us, as I just said, and we have to take attendance, that's a requirement for us. So, virtual attendance will be taken for students participating daily, logging in and participating, they'll have a schedule, and they'll have to participate in their subjects all day long, at, at whatever times their schedule says. Um, lack of participation will, will be an absence, and lack of participation in doing what you're supposed to virtually could cause a student to not pass the course, so we all want to work together to make sure that doesn't happen. Um, for traditional, we will take attendance, but we all know we're in a pandemic, COVID-19, something that is just, has been awful. Um, we will take attendance, but we will avoid punitive action for COVID-19 situations. We will work with the parents to resolve any attendance issues, and so just know that we're gonna have to take attendance, but we are, we're gonna work with parents and, um, to do what's best for students.
And, and for COVID absences, we will have a special code. We have now what we call essay days for students who are out to attend some kind of competition, if they're in the band, they go to a band competition, or if they're in the four-H, you go to a four-H competition, or an athletic event. We call those essay days, so we're gonna create a special code for COVID days, and so if students are out legitimately because a family member has COVID, or they have COVID, or they're being quarantined, they'll be coded with that special code, I think it's CE, so, uh, we just want to make sure, we're not gonna be, uh, punishing students or anything like that if they're out because of COVID, so we don't want sick children at school, so we're gonna really encourage parents to keep them home if they're sick, and, uh, don't worry about it, all right? But we are gonna be able to engage them through distance learning, we want everybody to be up and going with, uh, with, uh, Google Classroom, and so we want to keep children engaged even if they're home because of it. So, it's gonna be different than we've ever had school before, and so, in a way, this, this could be a, uh, we could learn a lot of good lessons from this, and maybe at the end of all this, we'll be better than we've ever been before, so.
So, student enrollment information, we have a central enrollment center, so any student that has any changes with, withdrawing from one school and moving to another school, their parent comes, our custodial guardian, guardian comes to the central enrollment center. Well, we're just asking and encouraging parents to call and, and make an appointment. Um, limit visitors, the student does not have to be in attendance for that, and we're encouraging visitors to wear masks.
Yes. Real quick, let me back up to the attendance thing. How feasible, is this the plan, and I, I don't think I fully understand what he was saying, but if, if child's been around somebody with COVID and had to quarantine for ten days, but if you're not sick, but they have to go home, how easy, or, or is it possible for them to keep up with school work on the virtual, can we?
So, so, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but
No, I, that's
I think you're going, I know where you're going with your question. So, we're trying to keep virtual and traditional separate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because virtual would continue, there should be no disruptions with that, because they're at home, we're pushing learning out from the school building. Um, so, let's take me for example, if I'm in a classroom, and these three are my students, and for some reason, they have to go home because they've been in close contact or exposed to somebody that has been tested positive, so they have to go home for fourteen days. Well, within that fourteen days, they're not sick yet, but they could get sick. So, let's just say Dr. Banks and Ms. Clayton, they have internet, but Ms. Lewis doesn't, so they're gonna have a Chromebook, they're gonna be able to join through Google Classroom, and the, the, somebody in the classroom will set up a Google Meet so they can watch the teacher teaching, so they can join that one.
And that's what I'm saying, there is a way, if, if they're home, they're like, I'm just home because I've been around somebody, I'm not sick, I want to keep up my, my work, there is a, a way for that to happen.
That is, there is. And so, Ms. Lewis doesn't have internet, she doesn't have an option to do that, so we would have an, an emergency learning pack to keep, keep her engaged in learning during the time. But let's just say they get sick in, sometime in the middle of that, if they get sick and they're not able to participate, we understand that.
Oh, I, I understand that, yeah. But I'm saying, while they are able to and want to, there is a way for them to keep up with their
Right, we want to keep them engaged in learning as, as
That was my, yeah, that was, that was what I was trying to
That was my, yeah, that was what I was trying to say.
That is our plan. Now, we're learning as we hope, so we will perfect it as much as possible. But this, as I say, this is a new era, so you know, in our strategic plan, it says transform teaching and learning. That is definitely what we've been doing. Transportation, as I said earlier, all students who, and staff who are on school bus will be wearing a mask. Buses will be cleaned between the afternoon, the morning and the afternoon route. They will have disinfectant, they will have hand sanitizer, there will be assigned seats where practical. Students who become sick during the day cannot ride the school bus home, parents will have to come get them. And we are encouraging any parent who can take their child to school to do that, to help us reduce the numbers of students on the school bus. The next page is the Copy County Schools' response flow chart. This came straight from the Department of Education guidance, and I will say that they have not updated their guidance with the 24-hour fever-free rule, or not rule, uncolored rule, consideration. So this needs to be adjusted, but that came out yesterday, and they've not updated this. When they update it, I will change it. So on the last page, this is our returning to school flow chart. So it basically kind of gives us a guideline to look at, because it's all need to all of us. And as I say, it changes, the guidelines change so frequently that we have to continually to look at something, and when it's written on paper, it helps all of us. So if they're symptomatic, that's individuals with a confirmed case of COVID-19 or close contact exposure to COVID-19, and they are, that are showing symptoms, which may include, but not, it's not a total list, some of those symptoms, then they would go home for 10 days, or they would stay home for 10 days.
And I think it's important that, I'm sorry, Ms. Miller, that we define close contact. Close contact is six, within six feet for 15 minutes or more with somebody who is confirmed positive. They have, if they are confirmed positive, and you're within six feet for more than 15 minutes, then that is, that is considered close contact. So it's not just that you were in the same room with them, it's that you were within six feet for more than 15 minutes with a confirmed case, not somebody who we might think might have.
So they go home for 10 days, they're sick, and they can't come back to school until they're fever-free with some type of, without medicine, without any fever-reducing medication for 24 hours. That may not be just 10 days, it may be 14 days, it may be 15 days, but it's at least 10 days. So that could change. So if they're asymptomatic with no symptoms, so this would be individuals with a confirmed case of COVID-19, but they don't have any symptoms. You know, there have been people who test positive that have absolutely no symptoms, and those still would stay home for 10 days, monitor, make sure they don't have any symptoms, and then they could come back to school. And when I say 10 days, it's 10 days from the positive test, so it's not just 10 days. So if you, it's whenever you tested positive, it's 10 days from there. So individuals with exposure to someone with COVID-19 but are not showing symptoms, that would be my three students that I had to send home, they go home for 14 days. And within that 14 days, they may or may not show symptoms. If they show symptoms, we encourage them to get a test immediately. If they don't show symptoms, the Department of Health encourages a test on the 10th day, and at that time, if they test positive, whatever day that is, it's 10 days extra. So it could be a number of days that they're absent. That's why we want to make sure we're engaging them in learning when they feel like it at home.
Say that for me.
Okay, so my three students went home for 14 days. Dr. Banks didn't show any symptoms in the 14 days, so after the 14th day, he came back to school. He didn't learn the whole time because he was well as he could be. Ms. Clayton started showing symptoms on the third day, so she got tested on the third day, but she didn't get her results back until the 7th day. So on that 7th day from that positive, it starts 10 days then.
Okay. I'll follow you. Pleasure, ma'am.
So that's all I have. Y'all have any questions for me?
Requiring a little kind of verification on any of this?
Okay. Verification, just a minute, Ms. Wilkerson. Verification like for a positive test? There was some discussion at our last meeting on Tuesday about that, and we did talk about, we didn't finalize that, but we did talk about the parents showing the test positive, like where their child had tested positive, but we asked that parents keep in contact with somebody at the school to kind of let us know, and we would keep in contact with them too, to check on their child, just to see how things are going. So, but yes, we have talked about that, but we've not finalized. I'll tell you, my, some of the girls in my department have been working on some letters for parents. So if a child is sick, that letter goes home, and it tells parents again kind of what the protocol is, and that is in there to stay in contact with the school, and the school will stay in contact. The schools have also asked for kind of like a checklist to make sure, and somebody would touch base with that parent to check off to make sure that that child is, has been fever-free or is still sick, or they may be in hot, you know, whatever's happening. We want to, as I said earlier, it's going to take a team, but we did talk about the parents producing the, because you can check your results on the internet for them to be able to show us a screenshot or something where, you know, somebody was positive, so.
Ms. Wilkerson, real quick?
Yes, somebody asked me about if their child has health issues, and they decided that they were going to do the virtual learning, now will they not be able to do the gifted classes or what? This was a question that was asked.
Ms. Wilkerson, to answer your question, we've got those, I have all those lists in my office, and we're working right now to organize how, what teachers. So we're going to really look at that to make sure we're meeting the needs of all the children. But as we said in the guidance initially, that we may not be able to provide those, you know, a gifted teacher for that student, but we're going to do our best to meet the needs of all the students.
So that means that if they gifted students, that this would be something they would have to suffer with because they have health issues?
If they have health, if they have health issues, by all means, they can do virtual, and we will do what we can to accommodate those, their, whatever they are, whether they're an ESOL student, or they're a special ed student with an IEP, or they have a 504, or they're a gifted student, or what. We're going to try our best to accommodate all those children.
Okay.
I'll know more once I'm able to really, to look at all the numbers and see how many teachers we're going to need and how that's going to play out, and then I can give you more of a specific answer. But if that child has a health issue, I would say virtual would be where that child needs to be.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller.
You're welcome.
Yeah, get your, get your page out. We've got to go through page by page.
Okay.
So in the traditional, page three of the traditional learning, I had folks contact me and just ask the question that if they start and they realize they're really uncomfortable being in school, and they raise their hand and say, I want my child to move to virtual, or are we going to, are we going to listen, are we going to take into consideration some of those things? And I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the exceptions that that probably come up, and I think it's going to work both ways, but I think we've got, I had a question from a parent saying, I'm going to start virtual because the parent has health issues, but they don't want the child to bring home. But if they feel like, when they go to school, that they see that their child is going to be, if the rooms are not as crowded as they expected, or, you know, the child's able to safely navigate, and this is an older child, it's a middle school child, that if they see the virtual's not working, that the child's falling behind, do they really need to wait nine weeks to raise their hand and say, I'd like to go back to the classroom? And you can add a combination, you don't need to answer me tonight, but we've got some time, we've got some time, but those are, those are questions that we...
And I know that, I do know that.
Right, right, so don't, and I'll have these for you, I don't want you to feel like I'm putting you on the spot, I don't expect an answer tonight, but these are things I wanted to share with the board while we're all here together. The question on, you answered the one I'm tempting, the, if the teachers, I know we were, we're going to encourage masks for face covering, but we've also, we've always traditionally felt like that the teacher's classroom was their domain to run their classroom as they felt they needed to. If that teacher feels like they want those students to face cover, or are we going to, we going to allow that?
I think we need to give the teacher the autonomy to be able to require the students to wear masks in their classroom. I think that's certainly, and when we say strongly encouraged, to me, strongly encouraged means if you're asked to put the mask on, that you do, but the reason we didn't want to say required, it's just like a while ago, I got just so uncomfortable with this thing on, I had it. Learning to wear the mask has been a different experience for everybody. You get to the point where you about just got to take it off for a second, you know, and so that's why we didn't have required.
Right, I was talking with Mary last night, and I know she's not full-time at school, but two and a half days she is, and one of the ideas was that because we're pacing, we're probably going to be pacing differently, because, I mean, we know milestones is not going to be an issue, but we still want to keep our kids on a competent pace. But, you know, it may be that we say, hey, after 30 minutes, kids, we're going to get up, we're going to wash our hands, we're going to go outside for five minutes, we're going to come back in. I know it's going to be different on every single campus. You know, we're going to go outside, everybody spread out, take your mask on, whatever, but I feel like that teacher, we need the trust of the teacher so that they can confidently roll out this instruction.
We have talked a lot about flexibility and having more hand-washing breaks and having more, you're right, I mean, think of, there's just a lot of things to take into consideration, but, but yeah.
I know, I know, and there's numerous things to think about, and I want to go through them while we're all here. In regards to our virtual enrollment, I think, and I've talked to some folks, I've talked with fellow board members, I don't know what their thoughts are on this, but I think we're going to get a lot of input after tonight's meeting from parents, saying, you know what, the plan sounds good, I want to disengage from virtual, I'm planning on going back to school. I also think we're going to have the other one, which is, I want to sign up for virtual. Can we extend that to Monday, since we're pushing out to the 17th?
Yeah.
And we make that very public, that we're going to put that out to Monday?
Yeah, we, I know we had talked about that, that if we needed to extend it, given the fact that the plan is just being released and our start date is being pushed back. I think extending it for this weekend and possibly shutting it down Monday evening would be feasible. I think that's very reasonable, given the fact that we're officially releasing our plan tonight, and there's been a change with our calendar, so I think that's feasible. Monday, I think if we went Monday evening, what did we do? We shut it down last night at 11:59. So Monday evening at 11:59, give your parents the weekend, think about it.
Thank you.
Can you turn it on now? Oh, yes, go ahead and turn it on.
We are now accepting responsibility. Well, thank you all for that.
We wanted to make sure we publicize that.
We'll note that. And with the virtual piece, and I know we've had this discussion, I know we haven't really made an official announcement, but can we talk about the piece of virtual and extracurriculars and the flexibility there? You know, I...
Yeah, I've talked with the high school principal and the ninth grade principal and the principals that have the extracurriculars, and asked them to work with parents if there's a need there to work with those parents, yes, sir. And encourage the parents to contact the principal and talk with the principal about what kind of need they might have.
I mean, I realize that if they, if they'll allow the student in, there's still going to be rules that that program's going to require, whether it's band, or whether it's sports, or whether it's a club, that once that child's in that program virtually, it doesn't mean that they, there's going to be rules within that program they'll need to follow.
Right. Yeah, I mean, typically, a child that's in the band program is going to attend school at the high school and be in the band class, so, you know, that'll be on the campus. So if there's a real need to accommodate them in some way, because of illness or something like that, then I would encourage that parent to contact the principal and talk with the principal about the particular issue, so that's how we're going to handle that.
Well, connectivity issues with internet, whether it's wireless or hard line or whatever, over the phone, phone service, cellular service, how are we going to accommodate the disconnection piece? If a child is on their schedule, they're following along, boom, you know, it happens to me at my home office, you know, I've got the ability to switch to cellular versus internet, but a lot of our families have one way, one-way connection.
What we put in our guidelines, if they have, they need to have internet to do virtual.
I understand that, I mean, I've got internet, but when it goes down, you know, I've got the ability to switch to cellular connection, but some folks just have one way. And what I'm asking is, are we going to, is that going to be on case by case?
I think we'll talk about, we've already talked about that, but we'll, my thought is, if I'm the virtual teacher and I've got every how many students, and you can't get on, you can't get on, I would try to reach out to you via phone to see what's going on, you know, because if you normally get on and you don't get on that day, or if you've gotten on at one point, but you not got on later, I just think that's something we're going to have to work through, but, yeah, that is going to happen, you're right, that probably will happen. But those are things that we can't control, and we don't know when they're going to happen.
I understand, yeah.
We're going to just have to deal with that as it happens.
But you'll work around it and be, you know, be understanding in person. This question appeals to Michael. Are we, are we going to not have any homebrew products for sanitizing? Are we going to have stuff that's labeled, and we're going to ask our staff to not bring in any homebrew, you know, mix the essential oils with the sanitizer and cause some problems that we're not expecting? I mean, these are, I know it's not bleach, I know it's not fly, but we don't need stuff being mixed, it doesn't need to be mixed, whether it's on purpose or by accident.
I mean, we're providing what they need, so there should be a reason they're bringing anything from home.
I'll stop right now, if somebody wants to ask a question. I've got more, but, but this is like a podcast.
Thank you.
All right, good job, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
And everybody, everybody, yes, working on this plan. So this plan is online now, those people who are on there, see that, it's not, we will be.
We haven't put it online yet. We haven't put it online yet, we wanted to present it to you all before we did, so we will get it online. There's a few adjustments I'll make, just based on some things we talked about, not major adjustments, and then we'll get it online.
All right. The next item on the agenda is audience participation. I did have some, some people sign up for audience participation. I have Reverend Rudolph Porter. And I would, before you get started, Mr. Porter, I would, uh, remind the people who are here, I'm not gonna read the entire policy, but, uh, we do have a public participation policy, it's called policy B C B I. And as provided in such forward policy, each individual will be given five minutes to address the board. And if there are numerous requests to address the board on the same or similar subject, the chair may select representatives to speak on each side of the issue. If a group is present and there's more than one spokesperson, a maximum of ten minutes will be allowed. If someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively, he or she should first contact the superintendent or the superintendent's designated in an effort to secure a satisfactory solution prior to seeking to address the board. The board will not hear oral complaints or criticism regarding school personnel during public meetings. All right? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, now Dr. Lee-
Yes, ma'am.
You also have a state, um, law that, that you, you know, when you know that there's a large crowd, that you need a bigger facility to accommodate that crowd. So, um, I just wanted to remind you about that one as well.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Dr. Leece and members of the Coffey County Board of Education, I'm Reverend Rudolph Porter, pastor of Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, and also serve as the political action chairperson for the Coffey County NAACP. As we move forward with the present school year, the greatest concern should be the safety and well-being of our children, teachers, administrators, and support staff. This has been communicated by the Coffey County School System for the past several months, with increasing frequency as August seventeenth deadline approaches for school reopening. Our district leadership has proposed plans for students and staff to return to school. I understand the challenges associated with trying to meet the needs of students while accommodating parents. All this despite COVID-19, numbers steadily rising. What is yet to be communicated is a plan that ensures a safe learning environment for all students, a plan that is designed to tackle the ever-present issues regarding racism and inequality within the Coffey County School System. At the last board meeting, I voiced concerns and disappointment in the lack of efforts by the district's faculty and school board to take deliberate anti-racist actions. Ignoring the injustices of widespread normalized racism and intolerance of others, or simply making a statement is not the answer. Furthermore, ignorance will not make it go away or any better for our students. Ultimately, this approach only assert, serves to deep, demoralize black and brown children, perpetuating the false notion that they are less. To do so puts the emotional and mental well-being of our children at risk. I ask for the board and academic communication with parents, students, and staff, and faculty that firmly takes in anti-racist stance. This has not yet come to pass. As a parent of a former Coffey County School System's child, and grandparents of two children in the school system in Coffey County, I have witnessed too many times where a black teacher or administrator was replaced with a white teacher or administrator. Saying that you want a diverse teaching force, and that you want that teaching force to reflect the community of students is one thing. Taking the steps to ensure this is another. What is being done to make this a reality for the Coffey County School System is the question. Who is part of these committees addressing racial bias? That's the question. And how will the problem with minority recruitment be addressed? That's the question. These issues are more than concerning, they are upsetting, and can have devastating effects on the child and the climate of the school system. When compared to the rest of the district in this RISA, there is nothing to feel good about. There is no comparison between Coffey County and other school systems in Okefenokee RISA. Coffey County has the largest student population, with the greatest number of faculty and staff counties, such as Pierce, Charlton, Grantland, Baker, Platch, Atkinson, and Ware, all have fewer schools, fewer students, and fewer teachers and administrators. Per capita, coffee percentage of black and brown teachers is far below where it should be, given that fifty percent of its students are of color, with only six percent of the four hundred and ninety-plus teachers are of color. How? This is not considered on track, this is unacceptable. As the leaders of the school system, it is up to you to ensure that the needs of all students are being met. It is your responsibility that every child, black, white, brown, or yellow, in the school system is able to see themselves in the adults charged with their education. It is your responsibility to address inappropriate behavior exhibited by your teaching staff. Hoping that teachers and staff will make good judgment calls and make good decisions is ineffective leadership. When that does not happen, you must have the courage and conviction to follow through with expected disciplinary action. Anything less is a failure to do your job. In the words of the late, great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., how long? Not long, because no lie can live forever. How long, Coffey County Board of Education? I pray, I anticipate, not long. We've been waiting too long.
Um, Reverend Porter, um, I just wanna say, uh, interrate on that. I have been, um, uh, told several times, when I bring this same issue up, about, you know, trying to compare the schools with Coffey County. You know, about, well, over in Atkinson County, you don't have X amount of black teachers. Over in, you know, um, Irving County, you have X amount. You know, but my thing is, if we're gonna mark the other schools, we need to mark the pace. Because the other superintendents or whatever, over at these schools, other teachers or whatever, they might not be making the same money that they making here. So if you're gonna mark them down your page, because they don't have a, a, a large school like we do. So we should be up in big numbers. You know, because of our school size, and because of the ratio of our black children. It should match, that should be marked with the black teachers or Hispanic teachers to accommodate our children. So I appreciate that, um, Pastor Porter.
Like I said, how long? Not long. I pray, I anticipate, we can do better than this, y'all.
Thank you, Reverend Porter. I do wanna point out, though, I know you said we have six percent minority teachers in Coffey County. Actually, our, we have twelve percent certified staff in Coffey County, so I do just wanna point that out.
Let the record be frank, okay?
All right, thank you, sir. Linda Nesbit.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Before I say what I came to say, I was listening to the comments about the hand sanitizers and all the kind of stuff. When I was going to high school, we started school in September, and we got out by May thirty-first. So there is a way that it can be done, because it has been done before, to set the time back. As of yesterday, there were one thousand eighty cases of COVID-19 in Coffey County. According to some parents, it is already in the school population. Georgia is one of eighteen states in the red zone. I did not hear anything about social distancing in the classroom. Do you have any kind of plan for social distancing in the classroom?
We are gonna, we're gonna arrange the desks to social distance the best that we can, and that's why if we can't social distance, we're gonna strongly encourage masks in the classroom. So that is a challenge, I agree, it is a challenge. It's, it's like on the school bus, it'll be a challenge to try to achieve social distancing, but that's why we're strongly encouraging the mask, so.
Okay, I heard you say strongly encouraged does not mean you got-
You'll have to ride the bus, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Nesbit, if I could, I, my, my question, I, my wife is a classroom teacher, she's an inter-legend teacher now, she's retired, but, but, uh, but she's on the campus two, two and a half days a week, and, you know, I think that things are gonna have to be worked out at the classroom level, and I hope that our teachers will show leadership to their children in the classroom on that issue. Um, I think there may be exceptions, in, in the sense that, that if, if a child is not able to, for, for, for reasons, or if a teacher's not able to, for legitimate reasons. There's a very compelling study that I shared with, with superintendent, um, from the CDC that was just released this week. It's not definitive in the sense that that's how we need to go about doing things, but I think it's a really strong example. You can go to the CDC website, or I can share the link with you. It is a, a, a study based on two hairdressers in Missouri who, at some point in April, when they opened their business, according to the rules in, in Missouri at that time, they both masked up, that was part of the, the guidelines for, for their business. They were also, at some point in April, at, at different times, uh, symptomatic, and then when they were tested, they did test positive for COVID. During that window of time, they served a hundred and thirty-eight customers. They required all of their customers to mask. None of their customers have tested positive for COVID. I think that's a very compelling reason to, to cover, when we're in small rooms, we can't separate. Uh, I'm not saying that it's a, a, a definitive cure, or, or, or a definitive prevention, but I think it does go a long way, and, and I think a lot of the issues concerning how we go back to school with COVID are gonna be trust and confidence.
Right.
I, I hope that after tonight's meeting, and we're gonna talk more about it, there's gonna be board member comments toward the end. I think folks need to start working with their kids now on, on-
Well, even Dr. Fauci says that wearing a mask will help.
Yes, sir.
You know? And if my grandson goes, I'm at that age, he might can't tell, but looking at it, but I'm in that at-risk group.
We all look better with a mask on.
So for him to be around somebody who says, well, I don't wanna wear a mask, and you have a teacher that says, well, I'm not gonna make them, because the school board didn't tell me I have to make them wear a mask, and then they say, you know, he brings it home to me, so that's, that's, that's my concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I, I think, I really think that's a great point, because, you know, when I, I sit up and I watch how, um, at the board, we, um, we make sure that we have the distancing there. Kids at the board, since I'm not there, I'm saying there. We make sure that we have social distancing there. Make sure that everybody have masks on there. You know, whether it's mandatory or not, that we're all doing this. But we don't care enough about the children to make sure there's social distancing at the school. So that's something that, you know, we really need to think about. I don't know if it's for social distancing out there, because you don't want but a few people out there to speak, you know, but it, it's got to be a reason why that we make sure that we in social distancing, but we don't care about how close the children are.
I would, I would have to say it's not that we don't care, Ms. Wilkerson, I think we all care, and we, we love the students, and we wanna, uh, keep safety as the priority, it's just the challenge and reality of actually attending school, that it does make it a challenge, and, and we understand that, and, and we're gonna do the best we can possibly do, and it's something that's gonna be ongoing, and we're gonna work at it, and, and our teachers are gonna, I'm sure they're gonna come up with strategies in their rooms, and, and, uh, but this is just something we're gonna have to deal with and work with, and if there's parents that legitimately don't feel like they wanna send their kids back, then they've got the virtual option that they can choose. And so I do think it's gonna at some point be a personal decision that people have to make, but I do understand your point, appreciate your-
Yeah, I understand that as well, but what I'm saying is, you know, even though we know that this is gonna be a part of the school, you know, this is the new norm now, that, you know, they're a concerned town, that they're being locked out the door, that's not being able to come in and to, um, sit around to speak or to listen or whatever, because they're locked out, shut out. You know, so if we can understand that the children got to suffer through the new norm, that we have to understand that we as, uh, board members, superintendents, uh, whoever, leaders of this community, uh, of this school system, we have to suffer as well. We have to let these folk in and, and listen to them, instead of, you know, putting so many chairs out.
The next person on the list is Tawana Bickers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tawana Bickers, and I am an alumni of Coffey County High School, graduate of nineteen ID. I shared this podium with you guys last month, and so tonight I wanna come as a follow-up. We are definitely indeed dealing with unprecedented times. And for the most part, I know that everyone is doing the best they can, given the hand that they were dealt. So I applaud everyone for your time and efforts. But tonight I want to respectfully ask that you all listen, not with the intent to respond, but to hear our heart, to hear our pride, and to understand the perspective in which we're coming from. I want to continue with the theme that we were speaking on last month, in this very same room, in reference to the racial disparity, the disrespect, and the inequality of black and brown people. Many of you board members since the meeting have asked the question, what's wrong with the black community? Why are they so angry? Why do they have to say Black Lives Matter, knowing that all lives matter? Well, tonight I'd like to share, from my perspective, a few issues, and also from your educators, who cannot speak and will not speak in fear of retaliation of you all. Black lives matter because we matter. Black lives matter, all lives will never matter until the black lives matter. The reason we came to you is we listed, gave you a packet, listed so many issues that we received from educators that don't feel the liberty to come to you for whatever reason. So I want to say, on their behalf, and on my behalf as well, So I want to say, on their behalf, and on my behalf as well, the social media you outburst with no consequences. The overlooked positions that our Black and Brown people are qualified to fill, we are just as educated as you are. The no consideration for promotions from within. You post a job for your friend, you post it for one day, and all the rest of the qualified applicants are not even privy to know the job was posted, and they're just as qualified as the other person. The lack of communication for the training and development that are offered. All of the teachers, the staff, the faculty, everyone needs training and development. To be hand-selected for training and development classes just because you know the principal is just simply not fair. No responses from the following chain of command. I believe in policy and procedure, I adhere to policy and procedure, thus why I'm here tonight. But there are many educators that have tried over and over again to voice their opinion and to voice the things that has happened to them, and they can't seem to get any type of feedback. Actually, you send them back to the person that hurt them. So just because you're a principal, and the principal is the supervisor, and the principal is a problem, if they come to the board, why would the board send them back to the principal? That doesn't solve the problem. It doesn't even acknowledge the problem. So there are so many wounded people here tonight, there are so many wounded people in this community, and they have a voice, but they can't share their voice because of retaliation, which I'm not sure why equal opportunity doesn't reside here, I'm not sure why the promise of respect and fair treatment does not adhere at this particular school or this particular system, but we know what we know, we deal with what we deal with. The hiring of new positions is also continues to be a struggle with Black and Brown people. And the teacher mentors, I guess is a program that you guys put together, and I researched it, but now we have one person that's over the whole program versus individual teachers who was also allowed to be in that program as well. We made a lot of recommendations, written procedures put in place for all administrators to follow, to ensure that the promise of respect and fair treatment goes all over the board, and then it's not an individual thing. I am out of time as always, but I will say this to the board, during this time, this is the best time in the world to show the leadership that you guys are here to lead. During this time, in this crushed community, it is the best time for you to show, Dr. Lee you said last month, "I care." You said, "I love the people, I love the students." Then when we go back and we see the consequences for the actions of how they were wounded, that love is a verb, and it just doesn't seem like it. I'm not saying you don't, it just doesn't seem like it. So to the board, I say, "You were elected to lead. Lead, follow, or resign."
Thank you, Ms. Bickers. You know, it's bad, I just sit there and listen at all the hearts crying out and everything, and none of you, none of my board members, nobody says nothing. But if we, WALB come in, we'll have everything to say, we're made like we love everybody, we having diversity classes, you know, it is equality here, you know, but when we come to speak, don't nobody have nothing to say. You know, it's bad that, you know, we don't have, don't nobody have anything to say, nobody has a heart, don't feel nothing for the pain and the suffering that we are going through. You know, it's just as bad as COVID. You know, I will treat it, this is COVID-19, we have it, so we're positive, we tested positive.
I will respond, Ms. Wilkerson, that we have formed several work groups under the focus area three in our strategic plan. We have a strategic group that's working on the discipline, and that group is led by Dr. James Banks, and he has Dr. Dana Bickers, who will be assisting him with analyzing the discipline data and working in that area, and that's found under focus area three, people and culture. Then we also have a focus area group that's gonna be working with human resources and minority recruitment, and that team is made up of Ms. Kim Clayton, our HR director, and Dr. Tanya Johnson, who is our special education director. Then we also have a work team that's working on the professional development and the anti-racism training and cultural competency training, and that group is led by Dr. Christina Tucker and Ms. Allison Speight, and those groups have already met since last month, and they've started some really productive work, so they're working on those things that were just discussed, and we certainly are gonna continue that.
Yeah, but my thing is, Dr. Lee, every time, it's always really, you know, when you bought up this, by these teams, you make sure you haul out, that team is directed by a Black person, you might as well say it. Dr. Banks, this team is directed by Allison Speight, this team is directed by Tanya Johnson, you know, and, you know, you really let me know that, hey, they not asking for any minority, you know, so why should you? You know, but do they really have the authority? Do they really have the voice? Can they really recommend? Or do they just have a position? Are they working behind somebody? You know, I'm just, I'm trying to see, I don't know. They might not want none, but my thing is, like I tell you all the time, you are the captain of this ship, and it falls back on you.
Well, thank you.
You have to pull up every one of those names, but everybody knew your name, everybody know you. So it seems like Dr. Lee might be the one that don't want any minorities here.
Well, I would disagree with you 100%, Ms., I disagree.
It seems like it. See, you don't never hear me out. I say, "It seems like it," but you can call out the other names, but it seems like you might be the one, because do they really have the authority to come in and say, "Listen here, Dr. Lee, I want Tanya Wilkinson out here, get her on at one of these schools." Do they really have the voice to come in and recommend?
Well, I think we can get together, talk about it, I mean, you're part of the team, they're part of the team, we're all part of the same team, we're all called the same
But why nobody saying anything? Nobody is saying, even though we all are part of the team, nobody is talking tonight. My community is coming crying out. These are the ones that elected me. That's coming in crying out. And some of them, y'all, the other board members, y'all sitting out there, y'all was elected by them. So why is nobody not saying anything? Every last one of these folks don't live in my district.
Well, I'm not here to speak for anybody, but we do have a good bit of business to continue on with, and we do have an agenda and such as that, so I do think we need to kind of, you know, we need to listen, but we can't debate every position here tonight, so that's kind of why we have an agenda.
I forgot about, I'm sorry, I forgot about, we don't have time for, go ahead.
Excuse me, my name is Clarissa. My name is Cantalara Polk, and I've been applying for a job for 10 years now, 10 years. I started out with substituting, and I'm about to cry because it's emotional, it's hurtful to know that. I have three kids in this school system here, and I've been applying, and I've spoke with Ms. Kim Clayton here face to face. I feel like you guys are holding against me that Tanya Wilkinson is my aunt. I have graduated from college. I have a degree, I have paraprofessional license. No one is giving me a chance. I had an interview with Ms. Sherri Berry. She told me she almost promised me a position, and then one day it just went away. I was told to contact another administrator at another school when I spoke to Ms. Kim Clayton about the situation. It was laughable, like, we no longer have that situation, we no longer need you, we replaced you with someone else. That was almost the discussion, right? It's very disappointing to know that, you know, let me demonstrate something real quickly. As an adult, me standing here amongst all of you right here in this circle is very uncomfortable. But if I come over here, and I stand up in here, I feel better. You know why? Because we are together, united, different colors, we're not, it's not just one color, one side. Imagine how these kids feel, not being able to identify with anyone. These kids here in this community, they know me, because I'm out and I'm active with them. I have been trying to implement a program called Promising Queens that's dealing with pregnancy prevention amongst the teens, because, I mean, we need help here. Our kids are screaming out for help. They don't have anyone that they can relate to, they don't see anyone on a daily basis. Once they get home with their mothers, their families, it's time to go to bed, it's time to eat, do your homework, go to bed, go to sleep. So you're all they see all day long. We don't get much time with our kids, so if I'm begging to come inside of a school system that my kids are a part of, I expect to have some kind of opportunity, and I'm not given that same opportunity. I just wanted to say that in front of all of you, because it seems that this conversation that I've been having has been on the hush-hush. I'm being told to do a job of a human resource worker that's being paid by you guys to seek for employment, when you have an employment portal that everyone else gets to use. I used it correctly, but somehow I'm getting dispatched out to do my own work. I can't hire myself, because if I could, I would, I would be hired, trust me, but I just wanted you guys to know that, and I wish something, I hope that something gets done. Like, we don't just keep applying and getting told no. 10 years is a long time to even sit in front of a computer and complete multiple applications over and over. It's hurtful. That's all.
That is my niece, and it hurts me, dear, it hurts. And see, we have invested in our educations as well. We deserve an opportunity as well.
All right, and we have...
We are qualified as well.
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Kay Moore, Kay Moore. We have Diana Andrews.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. I would like to say that I have the prettiest mask on tonight with the Trojan logo on, it was given to me, and I appreciate that, but I'm just gonna kind of change up a little bit what I was gonna say, I'd just like to say a few words that, you know, I look back about eight years ago, when the school board was internal, our whole county was, and we didn't know what tomorrow was gonna refrain. And with all that being said, and all the restrictions that we were put on, you know, today, I kind of look around, and it's a lot better than it was then. We really need to be very appreciative of the leadership we've had to get to where we at today. With that being said, there's a lot of room for improvement on both sides, three sides, four sides. And I think listening to people and understanding people, and understanding that we're all human, all of us, and we have feelings, and they get hurt sometimes. You know, we talk about, you know, we strongly suggest to wear a mask. You know, I don't know where we fell down at, because when my parents told me, "They strongly suggest you do something, you do something," but we can't seem to do anything without questioning somebody about it. We can't take orders, nobody wants to take orders, nobody wants to stand up and say, "I'm sorry." You know, it's my way or the highway, and I'm pretty much fed up with it. I pretty much wanna go to Bridge Town and retire, and fish, and hunt, and let somebody else worry about it, but you know what? That's a sign of poor leadership. We all need to be involved. You know, we all need to be involved. And I'm proud to say that Monday night, I was selected to be the president of the Touchdown Club, again, it's my 15th or 16th year. And people ask me, "Why do you do this? You don't have any kids in the program." I don't, but I know what it's like to be raised up, wanting to play sports, can't play sports, so you have to work to put food on the table. I wasn't able to do that, but I can help kids to better themselves tomorrow, whether it's to get a scholarship to play football, that's one thing, okay? All of us are not gonna be pros at what we do. If it's to get a kid off the street to make them a better person or a man, that's what I wanna do. I get accused of a lot of things. I appreciate the story going around that the Touchdown Club has bought me a truck, they might have bought it, but I pay for it. And I'm not sure exactly how much it's cost me in this community to give 15 years to such a program, but I'm elected to come back in, to serve as president, to really polish this thing off, because we've done a superb job in what we're trying to do now. There's people who can't get to a football game, there's people who can't climb the stairs, there's grandparents, there's aunts, there's uncles. We are live streaming this thing, this is our third year into this, because they wanna watch their kids play it. They might can't even afford to get there, we're doing that for free, we spend a lot of money doing that. This year, we're doing live podcasts, we're doing everything that we can to help improve all these kids that are out there on the field to have a great time. And I know that's a long ways from some of the things that we discussed tonight, but all of that is part of it, whether you like it or not. Athletics is part of it, it's a big part of it, and it keeps a lot of kids focused, it keeps their grades up, and I'm proud to do what we can do, and I just think we all just need to really relax here and understand that everybody in here is trying. Everybody in here is scared to say anything from time to time, I've never seen nothing like it. But telling the truth doesn't hurt. If you tell the truth, it doesn't hurt. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, did Kay Moore or Diane Andrews?
Diane Andrews left.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, well, that concludes our audience participation. Yes, sir, I would like to go to executive session to discuss personnel and the superintendent's evaluation.
We have a motion in our executive session discussing.
I think the motion is in executive session.
Ms. Wilkerson, can you hear us?
You are. I'm here.
Okay. We got a motion in, uh, second. That's the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We'll adjourn.